Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February 10th, 2020 Hillsborough Township Planning Board meeting. Please join me in a salute to the flag.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is it 2022? 2022? I thought you said 2022. Oh, well. We don't know words. Okay, please be advised, this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Publics Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, otherwise known as Sunshine Law. Notice that 2022 annual meeting schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, the township clerk, posted on township's website, and available here at the Hillsborough Township Municipal Building. In addition, application documents have been made available on the township's civic clerk website, and complete application files are available in the Planning and Zoning Department for inspections in accordance to the public meeting notice. And with that, may I have a roll call of board members and also board and township professionals, please?
Mr. Pena?
Here.
Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. Santa Maria?
Here.
Mr. Scobbo?
Here.
Mr. Heskey?
Here.
Mr. Chikarow?
Here.
Mr. Bellport?
Present.
Vice Chairman Julian?
Here.
Chairman Dorachi?
Here.
Mr. Maske?
Here.
Mr. De Sessa?
You.
Perfect. First up, we have consideration of the October 7th, 2021 meeting minutes.
The eligible members are Mr. Santa Maria, Mr. Heskey, Mayor, and the Chairman.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to approve these minutes?
To approve.
Second?
Any comments from the day's hearing? On roll call, please.
Mr. Santa Maria?
Yes.
Heskey?
Yes.
Elkhorn?
Yes.
Chairman Dorachi?
Yes. We do not have any resolutions for consideration or any planning board business listed, so next up is business from the floor for matters not on the agenda. If there's anyone that would like to address the planning board for anything that's on the agenda? And yes, and we've adopted a five-minute rule for such comments.
Seeing none?
Seeing none. We're moving on. No consideration of ordinances, so we will be going to our first application of the evening. ZP Builders LLC, file number of 21-PB-18-SV, Block 204.04, Lot 25.082. We got a third digit in there, okay. Formally Block 204.04, Lot 25.08, and previously Block 204.04, Lot 25, commonly known as 521, Hillsborough Road. The applicant is seeking minor subdivision approval and see bulk variances to further subdivide 1.89 acres into two residential lots unappropriately located in the R residential zone. Counselor?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is David Singer. I am attorney from the law firm Avella Singer &amp; Associates. I'm here representing the applicant, ZP Builders, who is the owner of Block 204.04, Lot 25.082. The applicant is proposing a minor subdivision of the existing lot for the construction of two single-family homes. Once subdivided, the existing Lot 25.082 will be conforming, but the proposed Lot 25.083 will require a variance for lot area because 0.89 acres is proposed and one acre is required in the R zone. We are further requesting, based upon memorandums from the town, a tree removal variance and hardship waiver for tree mitigation. Both new lots will have frontage along Hillsborough Road, and both lots will be connected to public water and public sewer service. Expert testimony will be presented in support of this application tonight, and the variance requested by applicant by our engineer, Mike Ford, and our planner, Ed Nolling. I'd like to start by introducing our engineer, Mr. Mike Ford.
Yes, I do. Michael Ford with Van Cleef Engineering Associates, licensed engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey, and I appear before this board on numerous occasions.
I'd like to ask the board to accept Mr. Ford as our engineering expert.
Okay, nothing has changed with your licenses since the last time we were here?
No.
Okay. And no one's looking at me, so we will accept.
Thank you. Mike, can you describe to the board the subdivision that we're seeking?
Okay. Yes. The property, as is what described, is in the R zone. It's located on Hillsborough Road, just to the west of the intersection of Woods Road and Hillsborough Road. Both lots will front on Woods Road, I'm sorry, on Hillsborough Road, with driveway access to Hillsborough Road, and will be serviced by public water, which is existing in Hillsborough Road, as are other utilities, with the exception of sanitary sewer. Sanitary sewer, both lots will be serviced by public sewer, and the sewer has been extended to the property from the north side of the property, that is, the rear of the property, and there's an existing sanitary sewer easement down the westerly track boundary. Perhaps, just as a matter of reference, the exhibit that's on the screen is the minor subdivision that was submitted as part of the application, last revised November 17th, 2021.
Mark.
Thank you.
Let's turn to...
(inaudible) We want to recognize that Mr. Bellport has joined the meeting at 7:37.
Yep.
I'd like to turn to the engineering memo prepared by Mr. Crude De Sessa dated February 3rd, 2022.
Okay. I'll highlight the elements in the review report that are referenced to be discussed. Those items that we don't discuss, we would agree to address to your engineer's satisfaction, and other items requested testimony. And part of that is with description of the sanitary sewer that I just left off on, there's an existing public sewer that comes in from the rear of the property and terminates at a manhole halfway down the side property line of the proposed lot to the west or left-hand side of the page. That's an existing eight-inch line that would be owned and operated by the Hillsborough Township Municipal Utilities Authority. In fact, the easement, I understand, was granted out the Hillsborough Road if and when they ever wanted to extend it further. Both lots would be serviced from that main, that is, a lateral to the westerly lot house, and then an extended lateral along a private easement at the northern boundary of one of the lots to service the easterly lot. And they would both be anticipated to be four-inch laterals at quarter-inch per foot in accordance with the HTMUI standards, and would be installed in accordance with township standards. With regards to tree mitigation, well, first stormwater. There has been a fully developed plan for the house that's on the lot, that's on the left-hand side or west side of the site. That house is actually under construction. A building permit was issued by the township. The new lot line would basically separate the two lots in half. The undersized lot is the lot which has the de minimis variance associated with it, where it's short 0.11 acres. Its proposed lot area is 0.89 acres, where one acre is required. This is one of the bulk variances that's required. That house hasn't had a fully developed plan for it yet, but we would anticipate that the house would be comparable to the house that's under construction. Therefore, on this minor subdivision exhibit, we show an identical footprint. While I'm speaking to the lot area, the applicant did approach the adjoining property owner to the rear right or northeast, and that lot, if you see on the key map, fronts on Woods Road and has this angled property line. And that existing lot that fronts on Woods Road is 1.4 acres, well in excess of the one-acre minimum, and the owner was reluctant to provide land that would square off this lot, if you will, because then that actually would make their lot a little, I'll say, awkward-shaped. But they were willing to provide for a 0.11 acre portion of their land, but it would be, I'll say, in a kind of an awkward shape, where it would be basically 30 feet strip along the rear of their lot. So it would technically make this lot conforming there for one-acre minimum in size, but it would be made, yeah, it wouldn't be usable, and it would be made by providing for a 30-foot strip of land between two other lots in an area that really would probably potentially in the future cause more problems than it would, you know, solve, and really would serve no utility to the proposed lot, the easterly lot. So that's, and then what I would also say is, these two lots, or this property as it sits today at 1.89 acres, was previously part of the parcel to the east of this site, where there's an existing house, and that total lot area was in excess of three acres. But when the owner of this house subdivided the property to create the 1.9-acre parcel, they didn't want to have to reconstruct their house, move their house, so the lot line was created in such a manner that respected that existing condition with the existing lot. But in an overall density format, that three-acre-plus lot could have been, if the house were removed, carved up into three one-acre lots. And certainly, the planner that'll be testifying after me could speak more to the bulk variances. With regards to stormwater management, the board engineer requests that we comply with the stormwater management regs. The applicant agrees to do that. And then with regards to tree mitigation, the existing house is under construction. There have been isolated trees that were preserved, but basically, the existing predeveloped condition of both the westerly lot and the easterly lot were, I'll say, a successional forest. That is, it had mostly cedar trees that were not in good condition, and as well as other trees that were dead or diseased, including ash. So of the about 110 trees that were on the whole property, about 86 of them would be removed to accommodate the two dwellings and provide for proper drainage around the dwellings. But of those 86 trees that were removed, majority of those are not trees that are suitable, you know, that are either not likely to survive or have issues already, or are cedar trees. The applicant would propose, so that would be a relief. There would be relief required for that portion. It's basically a two-acre wooded acre lot. Point, or 20% would only allow the owner to disturb, you know, 0.2 acres of the whole two acres, considering it all woods. So there's relief for that 20% threshold for residential dwellings and tree disturbance. And then with regards to what the attorney referenced in our introduction, we would apply the economic hardship waiver, which is tree mitigation at a threshold of 1.5% of the total construction cost. And do we have a number for the estimated total construction cost?
Yeah, that is $380,000 per home per lot. So $760,000 together.
Right. So that would equate to $11,400, or at $325 a tree, there would be 35 trees provided on this property. The minor subdivision shows the street trees along the frontage, as well as part of a prior approval, which this property was involved in, for the residential subdivision to the rear of us or north. There was a small area of proposed tree mitigation or supplemental trees, about four or five trees that would be proposed and planted on this property. I'm not sure if it was in the engineer's memo or the planner's memo or both, referencing the prior approvals, but the applicant would comply with that prior approval. We're not asking for relief for the planting of those trees, and we would plant the new tree mitigation in accordance with the ordinance applying the economic hardship waiver.
What's the square footage of the homes that you plan to build based on that $380,000 estimate?
Sure. About 3,500 square foot home.
3,500 each, or?
Yes, each one would be 380,000 for each home at 3,500 square feet.
Thank you.
I mean, nothing's on a drawing board right now. Those are just estimates.
That's true.
Right. Well, the one on the quote-unquote "existing" lot right now is, already has its permit from the town.
Right.
So that we know is going to be 3,500.
Maybe I can just reference with regards to outside agencies. We do have a review memorandum, or a review letter from the county planning board dated October 18th, 2021. It's not an approval, but the only comments they had were a contribution for the recycling containers, which is standard, as well as a request as to how the subdivision would be perfected by plat or deed. We anticipate it would be filed by deed. We also have a review memorandum dated January 31st, 2022, from Mr. Winiger, the township's chief fire marshal, where he has no comments regarding the application. And if there are any other questions or comments that I've not addressed in the engineer's review memorandum? There was a soil erosion and sediment control plan approved for the house that's currently under construction, and certainly, the new house on the easterly lot, should the board grant approval, that house would also require a soil erosion and sediment control approval. And then with regards to other outside agencies, the prior mapping and studies that have been done on the property didn't identify any streams or wetlands on the property. So we believe there's no NJDEP applications for regulated areas that would be required for the project. And then with regards to the Delaware Canal Commission, we would address any approval they may require to the satisfaction of your engineer as well.
Okay. So let's now turn to the memo from Mr. David Maske, town planner, dated December 21st, 2021. To the extent not already addressed in your testimony with regard to the engineering report, is there anything that you need to add to address the tree mitigation under Section 4 of Mr. Maske's memo?
Okay. Yes, there's, I've already described the relief required for the threshold of wooded area disturbance and how the tree mitigation would be implemented. The critical footprint beyond the 40 feet for the house, there are areas beyond that that would be, need to be disturbed for the driveway access to the property, as well as the sanitary sewer lateral that I described earlier, and the utility connections to the existing utilities in Woods Road. And then, under general comments, and this is connected to landscaping, the second paragraph is referencing the prior approval for the Shellburn Place application, where some tree mitigation was proposed on a portion of this property, and the applicant would continue to respect that requirement as part of that prior approval for the other application and plant those trees.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Are there any questions for this witness?
Just a quick question. Mr. Ford, is this the home that's currently under construction?
No, that's the existing house that...
That's not part of the subdivision?
This house, this house here is the one that's under construction. You see the driveway up the side, and you'll probably see there's a tree to be planted here, but there's a substantial oak tree that was preserved in about this location. So that's the house that's under construction right now. And then the new house that's proposed is to the left end of it or the east.
That house, you're pointing, that's the original ground?
This one.
This is the mother lot?
Yes.
In Max subdivision, that house would be the existing house.
Dave, get my... Sorry.
So I guess my question is, I'm sorry. Only have one microphone.
Sure.
The house that's currently under construction now, I know where that is, and Hillsborough Road is a fairly heavily traveled road. That portion of Hillsborough Road does not drain. Water collects. A home was built three to four years ago, almost directly across from 500 Hillsborough Road, that exasperated water, especially in the wintertime, that doesn't drain. Is there any sore drains in front of either one of those homes? I don't believe that there is that will do away with the water. It's flat, so the water doesn't drain. It's been worse now that the house under construction. There's mud and stones that have washed out into Hillsborough Road. I'm concerned for the school bus safety. I drive that road every day. I've lived there for years. What are you going to do to present or prevent, you're taking out trees in the front of the property, so cars, trucks go in and out of that driveway, which is now kind of stone and mud because everything's been removed. How do you plan to address that? Because, I mean, if you drive out there tomorrow, you'll see the mess from the house that's under construction now. My concern is putting another one, we're going to have another six, seven, eight months of stuff in the road, and now it's not going to drain any better. So that's my question.
Your engineer requested that we meet the stormwater management regs.
Sure.
And we'll comply with that. And then, the applicant, maybe you could speak to the township engineering department about the existing conditions along the frontage of this property, and if there's something that can be done. I think you're right. I don't think that there's any drainage there now. It's not, it's just an edge of pavement. There's no curb.
Correct. Yeah, because I brought it to the township engineer's attention, Tom Bellinger, in years past, and most recently, probably a couple weeks ago, because we had a lot of rain, and then things froze, and you have people going into the other lane to get around it because it ices over. So they're aware of it, and maybe Mr. Maske can follow up. My concern is, with another home going there in that section of road not being addressed is only going to make what I think is an issue that needs to be addressed worse. So I'd like to go on the record to see how that's going to be handled.
Work with the board engineer?
Okay.
Do you know you have a soil erosion permit for the construction?
The existing house does have a soil erosion.
So there should be a construction entrance?
Oh, there is. I mean, the little plastic fencing is there, but everything has been removed from the front of the property, so when the truck comes in to deliver the roofing materials, the truck comes in to deliver the appliances, stuff is tracked, you know, the driveway is there, but there's mud. You know, like I said, if you go out there tomorrow, it's...
They should have a tracking pad on the driveway area.
Yeah, I don't think it's tracking too well.
Don't they have to maintain the tracking pad, though?
So, I mean, it's, you know, it's brown, and it's, you know, you can go out there, Mike, tomorrow and then drive it. I mean, we haven't had rain, but it's there. But it's just a concern because that's a, you know, the school buses do travel that way, you know, from Country Classics to the high school. It's a heavily traveled kind of east-west road from that portion of the township. So I'm just concerned because it's a mess right now, and by the time the house under construction gets done and the mess goes away, that the board approves it, now we got another eight or nine months of mud and stuff in the road that I'm concerned about.
Right. I think the applicant would be willing to work with the township to address your concern. Okay. Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
Just want to clarify the tree mitigation numbers. So the 1.5% equated to how many trees?
Thirty-five for the two, to the two houses.
And how many are you planting?
We don't have a landscape plan done right now. We would plant those 35.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I guess my concern would be, tonight, we're basically looking at approval of moving a line, but there's no plans for construction. So, Dave, if it goes through your office, based on what we're speculating here tonight, do you review all, what needs to be reviewed based on what we're kind of speculating tonight versus what, in reality, might come to your office?
When they come in for compliance review, they're going to have to show where the trees are.
Yeah, because we don't know.
Or we won't sign off on them.
Soon. Okay, so you'll review it again at that point?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I have one other, not question, but comment. You had, just to clarify for the record, you were asking for waivers for an environmental impact statement, correct?
Yes.
And submission to DEP and DRCC?
Yes.
Okay, could you elaborate on why those waivers are being requested?
Yeah, the DEP is with regards to the, there's no wetlands, wetland buffers, or streams on the property. And what I said earlier is that we would address any DNR Canal Commission requirement this other lot may trigger to your engineer's satisfaction, either through a formal submission requesting a exemption confirmation or approval. The DNR Canal Commission has a jurisdictional determination process that we can go through to...
So we'll be looking for all that when you come in for compliance review?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
David, is there a re buffer requirement for the house between, I guess, between the house to the hallway to the right in the new lot?
No, nothing in particular, no. Any additional questions, comments before we open the public? Okay, may I have a motion open to public?
So moved. Second?
Any favor?
Aye.
All right. So if there's anyone in the audience that would like to ask this witness, Mr. Ford, any questions on his testimony, feel free to come forward. No takers, so.
Thank you.
Ready for our next witness?
This time, I'd like to call our planner, Ed Nolling.
Yes, I do. Yes, my first name is Edward, and the last name is not Nolling, it's Kolling. There's no N. It's K-O-L-L-I-N-G.
Making a mistake, okay. Ed, can you please tell the board your educational background?
Well, I graduated from Rutgers back in 1974, back when I started Rutgers. It was still an all-mens college. I've been licensed since the early 1980s. I've been licensed since the early 1980s, and I've appeared before planning boards, zoning boards throughout the state of New Jersey. In the early 1980s, I was the director of planning for the city of Jersey City. During the decade of 1990, I was the director for economic development in the city of Elizabeth. And I've been in private practice pretty much since I left the city of Elizabeth.
And your licenses are current?
Yes, I have. I'm licensed in the state of New Jersey, and it's current and paid book, and I'm also certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners.
I would ask the board to accept our planner as an expert in planning on this application.
Okay, any objections from the board? None, we accept. Thank you, may proceed.
Ed, I want to draw your attention to the December 21st, 2021 memorandum from David Maskey.
Yes.
Can you explain to the board why the lot size variance is required and why it can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the zoning plan and zoning ordinance?
Well, the reason why we're here, as the engineer has described, is that one of the lots is conforming, but the lot to, to the, looking at the page, to the right-hand side is 0.11 acres short. So that's why we're here, that's why we need the variance. I look at this as a hardship type of case. The northeast, northeast corner of the property is cut off. If that triangle were there, it would just about conform, or it would conform to the, to the lot area. So it's the pre-existing shape of this lot, and this shape existed even before, it was something I brought from the larger lot, which was the original 25.08. So I would look at this from the hardship perspective in terms of the positive criteria. Looking at the, the negative criteria, if you're granting this variance, I don't think will result in a substantial detriment to the, to the zone plan. The use of the property will be for a single-family home, which is consistent with the permitted uses within the district. The lot development can conform to all other bulk criteria in terms of setbacks and lot coverages and things of that nature. And I would also point out that, and I think the engineer actually mentioned it as well, the reason why the line was drawn between what became 25.08-1 and 25.08-2 is because of the existing home that's there. And the hardship can be created, not just by the shape of the lot, but it can also be created by the existing structures on that property. So that's, that's another thing to take into consideration. And if you looked at the overall size of the entire 25.08, that'd be 3.28 acres. So you would expect to have three homes, one acre for, for each, each home. So we meet that intent, the, the density or intensity of development that you'd expect in the zone is one home for each acre, and notwithstanding the fact that one is larger and one is smaller, that they, they would average out to meet that. So I think we meet that, that intent of the, of the zone plan. Similarly, I don't see a substantial detriment to the public good or general welfare. Again, the type of home that's being constructed here is consistent with the intent of the zone plan, it's consistent with the character of the area. This is a single-family area, and that's what will be constructed. We will meet all setback criteria, so I don't see any impact on adjoining properties, so no substantial detriment to the, the neighbors as well. So I think the negative criteria has been met as well in terms of substantial detriment into the public good and the general welfare.
Thank you. Are there any questions for this witness?
David? Drew? Anyone from the board? Eric, do I have to open again?
Still open.
We're still open, okay. Okay, so if there's anyone from the public that would like to question this witness on his testimony regarding the planning of this application? Don't see any takers.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, just to summarize, we're here tonight for a lot size variance, along with the tree mitigation variance and request for economic hardship with the potential to contribute to the township tree fund based upon the economic hardship calculation.
Do you agree to impose the same condition that was placed on the house that's currently under construction as it relates to water and sewer hookup?
Yes.
Specifically, that you would apply water and sewer connection permits within 60 days of, if you get approved tonight, and that no further permits, including building permits, would be applied for by the applicant until such time as the water and sewer connections are made to the proposed lot, obviously not to the house, but brought to the, brought to the lot. Would you?
Yes, the applicant would agree to that.
Thanks.
Drew, any final comments? Eric? Okay. So we need to close public before we, this formality?
We have a lot shot at it.
Well, that's true, too.
For the public.
Yep, okay. Okay, so the applicant has concluded their testimonial, so this is one last opportunity for the public to provide any comments on the record with regards to the application before the board decides on an action to take. Okay, see none? So a motion to close to public? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eric, summarize, please.
Basically, Mr. Chairman, you have an application, as Mr. Singer has indicated, for a lot subdivision to meet the conditions set forth in the reports by Mr. Maskey, Mr. De Sessa, the condition that Mr. Maskey placed on the record relative to sewer and water hookup, similar to the prior application, and for the addressing of the tree mitigation and the waivers of the environmental impact statement and related items.
Okay, thank you. So may I have a motion to approve this application based on Eric's summary?
So moved. Second.
Okay, any final?
Skobo. Second. Mr. Skobo.
Any final comments before we go to roll?
Just, Mr. Chairman, just, you know, like I said, if our engineer can take a look at that drainage issue, you know, like I said, I brought it up to the township engineer on multiple occasions, but I would like that addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other final comments?
That'll be added to the resolution.
Add that to the resolution? Okay. But we don't need to add it to the motion, amend it? Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Beasley?
Yes.
Mr. Santa Romita?
Yes.
Mr. Skoba?
Yes.
Mr. Hestad?
Yes.
Benjamin Delphor?
Yes.
Alan Conne?
Yes.
Mr. Julian?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Have a good evening.
How are you?
How you doing?
Chairman?
Okay.
Chairman, I can recuse myself from the rest of the meeting, please.
Sure thing.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks for coming. I understand.
Let the record reflect on this, the Skobos was true.
Hi, there is. They did, they, they were holding something.
You guys ready? Trying to go, somehow they're trying to, oh, where's they, okay. I see these guys are ranging.
They're spreading out.
One of them.
You got a big guy sitting next to you.
You're there, stick along.
Okay, we got him, we got him. Okay, we got him.
You guys ready?
Okay. Ready, okay. And next up is Harvard Way, JMJ4 LLC, with file number 21-PB-09-MSPV, Lot 58, Lot 1.09, Route 206, AKA Harvard Way. Applicant is seeking preliminary final nature site plan approval, C-bulk variances and waivers to construct a 107,366 square foot warehouse and associated improvements at the end of Harvard Way on the property in the I-3 light industrial zone. We had our first hearing on November 18th last year. The application adjourned from January 13th of this year without further notice, and I believe that revised plans and report has, has been received. So, with that, Counselor?
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Mike O'Rodnick. I'm an attorney at Savo Shaw, Corsini, Chlesby, O'Rodnick &amp; Fisher in Somerville, on behalf of the applicant, Harvard Way, JMJ4 LLC. As indicated, this is night two of a preliminary and major site plan approval for 107,366 square foot warehouse at the southern end of Harvard Way, Lot 58, Lot 1.09, on a vacant 9.1 acre parcel. This project is proposed to be accessed via two driveway connections to the completed Harvard Way cul-de-sac. Access to the Harvard Way, to Harvard Way is through a right-in, right-out roadway connection onto Route 206 north through Campus Drive. Subject property is located in the industrial three zone district. Importantly, warehousing, shipping and receiving are permitted principal uses in the I-3 zone. Preliminary and final approval was previously granted for development back in 1988, which was for a similar warehouse, flex warehouse use. However, the only development that occurred was on Lot 1.08, which was phase one. However, there was the construction of the detention basin on 1.09, which was completed in the late 1980s. The neighborhood consists of several industrial uses adjacent to the subject property, including a plastics manufacturer and a laboratory. Notably, this property has been zoned industrial for many decades, and again, there was a prior approval for roughly 88,000 square foot warehouse on the site. This building is proposed to be, be constructed on spec. No tenant has signed a lease yet. As such, any tenant operations or uses would be required to conform to the municipal ordinance since, as permitted in the I-3 zone. As for variances, we're seeking a C-bulk variance to go to 38.4 feet from 35 feet, which is, requires deviation from 188-106E, as our planner had touched on and the applicant had touched on at last hearing. There's also a proposed fire lane within a buffer. While the building fully conforms to the setback, the Hillsborough Fire Marshal has asked for emergency access around the perimeter of the building, which is proposed to be accomplished using a grass finish, so it's essentially a structure that can support the weight of a fire truck to conform with the request from Chris Weniger. And that, I would say, is a technical variance, since there is that use, that emergency fire lane access use, which would require a C-bulk variance pursuant to Code Section There's also a variance regarding the trees. Originally, there was a historic tree that was thought to be preserved, that was essentially in the center of the detention basin. That tree has since died, and the Environmental Commission had recommended that. We look to increase the area of the detention basin, so since the, the older tree is no longer viable, we've made some adjustments, and technically, that was a condition of the prior approval book, so we're seeking that as variance, if necessary, to remove that old growth, growth tree since it has since fallen, which would be a modification of a prior condition of approval. We also need a variance for tree removal. This application proposes a 66.02% of the onsite trees to be removed versus the 60% of onsite trees permitted to be removed per Section 188-163B. Although our original application did propose compliance after a meeting with the Environmental Commission, and again, meeting here in November, the applicant, as Mike Ford will explain in detail, has substantially increased the detention basin. It's also been altered to be a wet basin, and in compliance with NJSA 7:8, which necess, this will necessitate a variance from 188-163P. For waivers, parking spaces, nine by 18 versus the 10 by 20, minimum aisle width, 30 feet is required, 24 feet is proposed. The access drive, as we talked about with Betsy Dolan, our traffic engineer, the, the two driveways are proposed, one for vehicular traffic, one for the truck traffic. So that requires a variance or a waiver for an access drive that must be 30 feet from a property line. There's 10-foot separation on the northern property line, which it abuts the existing industrial building. Two driveways are proposed, and the applicant is also requesting an economic hardship waiver for tree mitigation. The Calc's look at, at 325 a tree, the applicant is required to place 452 trees. Applicant's proposing 93 trees and a cash contribution to the Township Tree Fund in the amount of $116,675. There's also, I noticed in the engineering memorandum, the loading dock to be 60-foot in length, and I'll have Mike Ford talk about that, but I'll identify it as a waiver. Application also proposes the infrastructure necessary for the development, including the parking areas, landscaping, buffering, stormwater management, utility signage and lighting. Parking, there's 31 spaces required. We're proposing 38 plus four banked. For the monument sign, we're proposing a compliant 39 square foot, square feet sign, 6.5 feet high, where the maximum permitted height is 15 feet, so we comply. And lastly, I just wanted to mention that we've substantially redesigned the stormwater detention basin, increasing it in both area and scope. That's done essentially in two ways, by rehabilitating the existing detention basin, as well as greatly expanding the capacity far in excess of the requirements. So this, it's the intention of this applicant to demonstrate to this board and to the public that the drainage will be substantially better than it exists today. At last meeting, we had testimony from Greg Reddington, on behalf of the applicant, our planner, John McDonough, and our traffic engineer, Betsy Dolan. With me tonight, I have two witnesses. I have Roberto Martinez. He's the architect. I'm just going to provide five or 10 minutes of architecture testimony, and then the bulk of our testimony is with Mike Ford, our civil engineer. Again, this was carried without notice from the November 18th, 2021 hearing, and unless there are any legal questions, I would like to swear in Mr. Martinez and offer him as our architecture expert.
Before I, Mr. Ash?
All right.
You want, please, you want to put your, put your appearance on the record to start?
My name is Jordan Nash.
Close your turn to Mike, Mr. Ash.
Thank you. My name is Jordan Nash, I'm attorney at Ash Legal in Westwood, New Jersey. I represent the Green Hills Community, which is a nonprofit organization consisting of...
the stormwater detention basin, increasing it in both area and scope. That's done essentially in two ways, by rehabilitating the existing detention basin as well as greatly expanding the capacity far in excess of the requirements. So this, it's the intention of this applicant to demonstrate to this board and to the public that the drainage will be substantially better than it exists today. At last meeting, we had testimony from Greg Reddington on behalf of the applicant, our planner, John McDonough, and our traffic engineer, Betsy Dolan. With me tonight, I have two witnesses. I have Roberto Martinez. He's the architect. I'm just going to provide five or 10 minutes of architecture testimony. And then the bulk of our testimony is with Mike Ford, our civil engineer. Again, this was carried without notice from the November 18th, 2021 hearing. And unless there are any legal questions, I would like to swear in Mr. Martinez and offer him as our architecture expert.
First thing since you guys reintroduced, might I reintroduce him, please? Thank you.
Before I, Mr. Ash. You want to put your appearance on the record to start?
My name is Jordan Nash.
Close your turn to Mike, Mr. Ash.
Thank you. My name is Jordan Nash. I'm attorney at Ash Legal in Westwood, New Jersey. I represent the Green Hills community, which is a nonprofit organization consisting of residential residents of Hillsborough and the nearby Green Hills community area. Last time we were here, I did speak about that this application does not actually comply with the New Jersey stormwater management rules, and it still doesn't.
I object to that statement. It's without foundation.
You said it does. I'm saying it doesn't. We have witnesses that will testify to what I'm saying here today.
You're not an engineering expert.
Are you serious right now?
I'm just objecting.
Gentlemen, we're not going to go with what happened the first go around.
I'm trying to introduce my case.
No, no. I've got the floor right now. We're not going to go back and forth, try to dismiss. Actually, it's an insult to the members of this board when we start to play, you know, these games. This is an experienced board. We know, you know, who is what. We know whose testimony we're going to take weight to, okay? So let's just get to it because I know we're all going to go till the end of the night. But I want to make sure that this thing gets wrapped up, not because that there's legitimate questions and testimony being, and not theatrics. Okay? Continue.
I understand that, sir, and I apologize. I am trying to just introduce my case. I well have an expert witness that testifies to what I'm saying about the stormwater management system. I'm not proposing to be an expert. I am an attorney. I will say that frankly, this application, when they came to this board, they were not ready. They've been revising ever since they got here. They weren't compliant then. They're not compliant now. They can't rely on that prior approval that they keep talking about, especially when they're not adhering to the conditions of that prior approval. In terms of the tree removal, they started at 1% over. They're now, they're saying 6% over. On their current plans, it says they're 7% over. They're only replanting 93 trees on this site. In terms of the stormwater management, they're not going above and beyond as they say they are because they've essentially set the bar for themselves and they've set it too low. And we'll show that. In terms of their new standard constructed wetland, it's not that. They haven't met those standards according with the BNP manual and according with NJDEP. There's, despite what counsel is telling this board, they're doing no such thing as a technical waiver and a technical variance. They need these waivers and they need these variances and have to justify them. And they're not able to do that. And we will show all of this with testimony. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before Mr. O'Grady's next witness this morning, I have a couple of housekeeping items.
Please go.
Three of the members of the board this evening who are here, Mr. Santa Marita, the mayor, and Ms. Smith have all signed the certification of absent board members that they have viewed the video recording for November 18th, 2021, which makes them eligible. And since Mr. Scoboe had recused himself, Ms. Smith is now an eligible member of the board for purposes of action either tonight or in the future. That's it for the clarification.
Thank you.
Mr. Martinez, could you raise your right hand and swear something?
Your son has started testimony about the truth. Just take your name off the record, please.
Sure. My name is Roberto Martinez. Last name is M-A-R-T-I-N-E-Z.
And could you just give the board a little benefit of your educational background?
Yes, I'm a registered architect. I went to school abroad. I finished some of my schooling in NJIT. And I've been licensed in the state of New Jersey for the last seven or eight years. I'm also licensed in multiple states, Pennsylvania, Connecticut. And I have testified throughout the state in many boards before.
I would like to proffer Mr. Martinez, an expert in the area of architecture.
Any objections? Okay, we accept. Please continue.
How long have you been working for Redcom?
20 years.
And is a bulk of that time designing buildings like this?
Yes.
Could you just go through your vision for this particular design?
Well, our client requested a warehouse for this area. And we're providing, you know, with the limitations required by engineering. A warehouse that it's going to be built out of precast concrete panels. Most of you will be familiar when you drive throughout Parkway, the new warehouses. So this is going to be similar to that. So 10 inches concrete panel is very good for the environment. Concrete, it is a recycled material. Insulation value of the material is also very good. It will reduce the consumption and energy. It's neutral colors. It's nothing that it, it doesn't pretend anything that it is to be. It's just a graceful building that is going to serve a purpose. It's going to have a small area for offices, which is highlighted in the corner entrance.
Should we mark that exhibit?
I don't think this has been marked. Is it, Mr. O'Grady?
We pre-submitted them as exhibits, but this should be A2. And could you describe what this is with a date?
I don't see, I don't think I can see here. It's so blurry.
Can you just describe? This is a rendering?
Oh, yeah. This is an artistic rendition of the building, how it will look. Like I said, it's going to have concrete panels, going to have texture panels to accentuate the entrance. And the rest is going to be panels with score lines, windows on the high side to bring natural light. And other than that, like I said, it's a utility building.
Who is the author of the exhibit?
Did you draft this rendering?
Do you know when?
I can tell you exactly the date because this is the one that I have here. It's June 25th, 2021.
Thank you.
I have no further questions for Mr. Martinez.
Mr. Maskey? Sessa? Okay, board members?
Just curious if your design varies by whether there's a known tenant or for this type of building where it's intended to be on spec at this point?
Spec.
I know it is spec. I'm wondering if that design that you've shown, would it, is it generally consistent with what you would do even if you had a tenant?
Yes. The only thing that will change is the amount of penetration, depending on the square footage required for offices. But typically warehouses between 3,000 and 5,000, 6,000 of office. The rest is warehousing. So, yeah, it is typical.
And do you, do you have an estimate as to generally, of the renderings that you do, the amount that it would be for spec versus for a particular tenant?
No. Honestly, no, I don't have, you know, some clients have a tenant before they start the process. Some of the clients just build for spec. Right now, I'm doing another one in South Bronx that doesn't have a tenant. It's just for spec.
Thanks.
Additional questions coming to the board?
Mr. Chair, all your mechanicals and stuff are on the roof, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Any thing that'll be on the ground outside the building as far as anything that would?
Not to my knowledge. Again, the use, it's as simple as warehousing. Any equipment most likely will be towards the center of the building, which due to the view, you won't be able to see it from the street.
Counselor.
Very quickly, Mr. Martinez, were there any topographical features that constrained your design of this building?
No, that I'm aware. I was given, I work with the engineer. I was given, like I said, the limitations of the square footage that I was going to work in. And I talked to my client, the size that he wanted, the shape and height that he wanted. And that's how we defined the building.
So those limitations are all provided to you? That's what you're telling me?
I'm just telling you what I just told you. I worked my engineer, I worked my client, and then they told me what they wanted. And that's what I did.
Okay, thank you.
Motion open to public?
So moved.
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
Okay. If there's anyone from the public that would like to question this witness his testimony as it relates to the architecture.
Susan Gollum, Fort High Club Road. What's the viewpoint of this? Is this from like toward the highway we're looking in this rendering?
This is as you enter the cul-de-sac. The other building will be on your right, the existing one.
The existing one. Where are the truck bays on this picture?
They are on the left side. You see that little vehicle there?
Yeah.
So they are on that side, way behind there, 40, 50 feet.
Okay. Did you say there was a height variance on this one?
I did not say that.
There is, there's a.
Okay. Then as the architect, why did you need, what use was it that you needed to have the extra height?
Customer service. My client asked for specific height due to the study that he made for what he needed the building. And that's what I came up with.
Okay, since it's on spec, he doesn't really know if he needs the extra height at this point. He could, could he have, in fact, a client, a leasee that doesn't need the extra height?
I believe that testimony was already given, so.
Yeah, Mr. Reddington had testified, you know, last hearing regarding the space needed for the fire sprinklers. And the sprinklers have to be below the lights. So that takes up about four feet, I believe the testimony was, as well as the structure of the building itself, which is another approximately four feet. So they're losing about eight feet. And so Mr. Reddington, I believe, testified that, you know, that this, we're trying to shrink the building as much as we can. It's more, they want to utilize more vertical space, given the limitations.
Okay. Mr. Martinez, the 88,000 square feet, the original, the old one, the old design, did you also design that one?
The original one?
From the 1980s?
No, no.
Okay. I was going to ask why it went from 88,000 to 107, but it's not your design. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Hi, Tom Sulich from Johansson Avenue, 161. Question for you. Last meetings, this warehouse right here. So facing the right is facing 206, correct? It's cul-de-sac, so 206 should be on the right here.
Do we have a site plan here?
Yeah, I think that's probably a better question for the engineer to orient.
Question I have for you then is the, if this were to be built, you have the loading docks in the back facing all the houses. Any reason for that?
No, that's incorrect. All of the vehicular traffic, both the loading bays and the vehicles for the office face away from the residential.
That's not the last plan they showed. Because if that were the case, they'd be facing 206, and that's not the case.
I'll let Mr. Ford address the site plan issues.
Thank you.
Any additional question to this witness? Do not see anyone else coming up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roberto. So our final witness is Mike Ford from Van Cleef Engineering, our civil engineer. Let's see.
Yes, I do. Michael Ford with Van Cleef Engineering, licensed engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey. And I've appeared before this board about 10 minutes.
Nothing's changed in the last 10 minutes. We will accept, please.
Mike, could you go over the existing conditions?
Okay. What I've, what I just put on the screen was the rendering, we're up to A3.
Yep.
This is another exhibit that was pre-submitted. It was hand-delivered to the township on the 28th. It's the proposed condition exhibit illustrating the current site plans, last revised, January 28th, 2022. Going back to a couple of questions that just were asked. Harvard Way is the access to the site, which is in the upper left-hand corner of the plan. That basically parallels Route 206, which is off the plan to the west. The existing industrial building on Lot 1.08 that was part of Phase 1 of the previously approved project that Mr. O'Grady referenced in his introductory is in the upper left-hand corner of this exhibit. And then what's highlighted in yellow is the subject lot 1.09 with the proposed building in beige. Vehicular parking on the Route 206 side of the building at the end of Harvard Way with an access driveway to Harvard Way. And then a second access driveway to the loading docks, which were on the north side of the property adjacent to Lot 108. Going out, the rest of the overall project, the existing detention basin that was referred to is in the northeast corner of the property. What's illustrated on this exhibit is the upgrade to that basin to a constructed wetland, wet pond basin. So you see, illustrated in light blue, the permanent pool area of that as well as the wet marsh areas and the landscaping around that basin. That's the existing basin that we would endeavor to rehab and upgrade as part of this application. What's also on the property is there's an existing sanitary sewer trunk line that runs down, as I'm highlighting now, just to the east of the building. That's the Hillsborough Township Municipal Utilities Authority sanitary sewer line. In fact, there's an existing six-inch lateral that was stubbed out and will be utilized for the proposed building. There's also another sanitary sewer easement. I'm highlighting it now, coming down along our southerly boundary, not parallel to it, but crossing it. And that's also an HTMUA existing sanitary sewer easement. With regards to public water, there is an existing 12-inch water line operated by New Jersey American Water in Harvard Way, an existing hydrant at the end of Harvard Way. That water line would be extended to service the proposed building as well as extended to provide for onsite hydrants to provide for onsite hydrants that have been located at locations as directed by your chief fire marshal, Chris Winiger. The earlier discussion was with regards to the fire access lane, that is the green fire lane around the building, and I'm highlighting that now. Basically, from the end of the paved parking area along the front of the building, there would be emergency access-only gate at the end of that parking lane, and that's where the fire lane would start and traverse around the entire building to the northeast corner of the site, where it would then connect up to the loading dock area, again, with an emergency access-only gate access. And that is located within that 100-foot buffer requirement while the building is beyond that 100-foot buffer requirement. You'll see the existing vegetation on the site on this exhibit, that is the existing trees, both onsite and just to our east, where a township lot is, as well as the existing residence is to our south along Brooks Boulevard. And then off the page toward northeast is the Green Hills Community, and that access is from Duke's Parkway East. The monument sign is right at the entrance to the driveway. The loading docks are separated from the parking. There is some trailer parking opportunities here. Again, back to landscaping, we would endeavor to preserve the existing trees to the greatest extent possible, and as was discussed earlier, the application when initially submitted met the 60% threshold of disturbance to existing wooded areas. But after meeting with the environmental commission, as well as board comments and the concerns raised about stormwater management and endeavoring to do better and more, there was a existing area within the existing basin that bumped out in the area I'm highlighting We understand because there was a larger tree in that area at the time of the application site plan approval for Phases 1 and 2 in the late 80s, that tree has since fallen down. It's not even there, just a stump. And that was observed actually during a site visit with two of the environmental commission members that I attended with. So that was discussed at the environmental commission meeting, and what they suggested and directed us to do is to make the basin bigger by over-excavating that area where the tree was to provide more volume for the basin. And then also at the time, environmental commission members, as well as, I believe, board members, made suggestion to enlarge the basin to the greatest extent possible to the south, that is beyond where it ends now. With regards to outside agency approvals, we do have a pending application with NJDEP, land use regulation program through our environmental consultant, Edward Cook of Eastern States. That's where the filling of isolated wetlands onsite, as well as the disturbance of the existing detention basin, which over time has become classified as a wetland area. So that requires a permit to do the work that we're seeking to do to improve and maintain that basin. We also have outside agencies, and just as outside agency housekeeping, a May 21st, 2021 letter from the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission indicating the project is exempt from their review and approval. A June 4th, 2021, letter from the Somerset County Planning Board indicating they approved the application, as well as a September 16th, 2021, letter of approval from the Somerset Union Soil Conservation District. I mentioned earlier the township's fire official, Mr. Winiger. We had an earlier review from him, and then a most recent review dated, which we responded to, as well as a new letter dated January 31st, 2022. We would agree to address each and every one of the comments in Mr. Winiger's January 31st review to his satisfaction. During the development of the plans, after the reviews, I met with Mr. Winiger to discuss the location of the fire hydrants that we've indicated on the plans, as well as markings along the emergency fire lane around the rear of the building, as well as designated no-parking fire zones on the site plan. Stormwater management. As I said, we have an application pending with NJDEP. They would review the application with regards to stormwater management because we are disturbing the existing basin, which has been identified and mapped as a wetland area. We are in compliance with the state regulations, as well as the township regulations with regards to stormwater management. And throughout this process, we have made several revisions to the plans, and I would say that's not normal, but not normal for what I understand the statement was made earlier. That was because we endeavor to react, react to comments and provide information so that it could be reviewed and commented on, and also to respond to concerns and comments that have been raised throughout the meetings, including the environmental commission, where a number of the commission members made comments, as well as people from the public that attended that meeting. Stormwater management, this was a regional basin to service Phase 1, which was already built, that is Harvard Way and Campus Drive, as well as the building on lot 108 that already exists. And at the time, a Phase 2 approval for the building on this lot 109 was issued. However, that building was never built, while the basin and the building on 108 were constructed, as well as the road access to the site. We reviewed and obtained copies of those prior drainage reports. We did an analysis where we have to account for not only our onsite stormwater, but any water that passes through our site. And with regards to the stormwater management itself, the pre-existing conditions, there's properties to our south that front on Brooks Boulevard that flow in a northerly direction across our site and into this basin. In the pre-existing conditions, we assumed those lots as wooded lots. We didn't take credit for the existing impervious coverage that exists on those lots with all of the houses that are already built there and the driveways and any other impervious cover, which we could have done. Those improvements have existed since the 80s, or prior to the 80s. Another conservative element of our analysis is the existing building on lot 108. In the late 80s, when you did stormwater management analysis, and the report bears this out, you did an analysis where you had to provide for stormwater mitigation to meet the pre-existing peak flow. So if your pre-existing peak flow and the existing condition was 100 CFS, as long as your basin with the additional impervious that you constructed, reduce that peak flow to 100 CFS, you met the criteria. Since that time, regulations have changed. Since the construction of the building on lot 108, regulations have changed. If that building were built today, it would be required to meet the reductions in the storms that you designed for, the two, 10, and 100-year storm, with the reductions that are in the state regulations and referenced by your township regulations. But because it's an existing condition and existing impervious and off our site, not part of our disturbance, we're not required to reduce for that area. We could have left the design as it was for the existing basin. But what we did as part of this analysis is consider this impervious coverage and the additional flow from it as if it were generated as part of this project, that is new disturbance, and the two, 10, and 100-year storm reductions, that is 50, 75, and 80% reductions from the peak existing conditions, or from the existing conditions, were met for, not only for our onsite, but for this off-site building as well. There was a soil consultant engaged by the applicant who did onsite soil testing and determined that the onsite soil did not, or were not suitable for groundwater recharge. And in fact, while the Somerset County Soil Survey identified soil types of C soils, this is a hydrologic soil group, the onsite soils determined by the consultant for the applicant in their onsite-specific studies determined that it was D soils. That's poorer soils, A being the best, D being worse. When we did our analysis for runoff, part of your analysis is taking consideration those hydrologic soil groups. In other words, a lawn, a lawn that's in a soil group C would have less runoff from it than a lawn that's in soil group D, because those soils in D are not as permeable and would provide, or would cause more runoff from a D soil. When we did our analysis of the existing conditions onsite, all being wooded, we did not take credit for that D hydrologic soil group. We did the analysis as if it were, in fact, C soils, that is, the existing condition from those runoff of the onsite trees is less in the existing condition than what we could have asserted based on the site-specific soil tests. What that results in is that the existing condition that you're measuring your proposed condition against, that is, the off-site impervious that's there, that provides more runoff, but we're not taking credit for it, we're considering this as if it's all woods, which would be less runoff. The reductions that aren't required for an existing impervious coverage building, we are applying as if it were built today. And then the onsite area, which was classified based on onsite-specific soils testing, could have been D soil, but we identified it as C soil, so the runoff from those woods in a C soil is less than what it would be from a D soil. And why this really makes a difference is because impervious areas, since they're impervious, no matter what soil you're over, it really still would have the same result of runoff. So what we end up with is, in the existing condition, the runoff from this area, that is the off-site, the onsite, is being treated in a conservative manner so that the targets we're meeting with our reductions in the developed analysis, that is, the routing through the basin, are lower than what they could have been in a less conservative analysis. Now, in the proposed condition for the stormwater runoff, we are targeted with meeting certain reductions, like I said, with the disturbed area onsite. The peak allowable flows, based on that analysis, for the two, 10, and 100-year storm are 8.84 CFS for the two-year storm, 25.93 CFS for the 10-year storm, and 62.3 CFS for the 100-year storm. That's the allowable discharge from the site, as well as the surrounding areas that are part of the drainage analysis at the point of interest. In the two-year storm, while our allowable peak flow is 8.83, 8.84 CFS, with the modifications that would be made to the basin, including an outlet structure, that 8.84 CFS allowable is substantially reduced well below what that allowable is, and the proposed condition is 2.59 CFS, substantially less than the 8.4 allowable. In the 25-year storm, the same condition exists where the proposed condition is substantially lower than that max allowable, 25.93 CFS permitted, where 9.7 CFS is the proposed condition. In the 100-year storm, where 62.3 CFS is permitted, our routing demonstrates that it would be 8, excuse me, 34.52 CFS, almost half what would be permitted. Part of the improvements to the basin are the expanded volume, some 30% or more added volume than what exists today. And bear in mind that the existing basin, as it was built, is, was intended to service buildout of this site, including the Phase 2 on lot 9.08. Improvements to the emergency spillway, that is raising the spillway to capture more runoff onsite and increase the volume onsite. The area that I described earlier where the tree was would be removed, that soil, further expanding the basin volume, and then to the south, the volume's been increased. By going to the wet pond, we've also deepened the basin. And then the wet pond itself, this is a permanent pool of water that provides for water quality measures where sediments can be settled out in that permanent pool. I've talked and focused on water quantity so far, that is, the total discharge peak flow. There's also an element of water quality required. I just referred to the basin itself providing enhanced water quality. There's also onsite water quality measures in the form of what I'll refer to as mechanical treatment devices that are in compliance with the new state standards requiring green I'm going to take a breath.
If I could ask a question real quick? Where is the mechanical site?
Mechanical treatment devices? There, I'm highlighting one right now, right by our trash enclosure. And then because the new state standards require those water quality measures to not exceed a certain drainage area, that is, previously, prior to March of 2021, we could have-
2.5 acres, right, for-
Right, right.
-year over that.
Well, we're not over that because we've added water quality measures in the paved areas just prior to the inlets, the catch basins. So as we work through these new regs, we're all, you know, including the mechanical treatment device providers, we found that one of the most efficient ways to address that is right at the point where it discharges into the catch basin, so that you're not capturing stormwater that doesn't need to be treated. We're treating dirty surfaces, that is paved surfaces. The water runoff from the roof surface doesn't require treatment, so we're targeting those areas just prior to the inlets with those mechanical treatment devices.
You're proposing more than one?
Yes, there's multiple ones throughout the site, yeah.
So Mike, in the environmental commission letter, picking up where the mayor was talking about, he talked about the baseaver is not a green infrastructure practice, is, are you-
We've eliminated that.
You're eliminating?
Right.
And so we're talking about the manufactured treatment device that satisfies the green infrastructure can only treat a maximum drainage of 2.5 acres. The applicant's proposing to use the baseaver, which we said we're not using, to treat 2.89 acres, so that's different.
Correct, yes, yeah.
So what's the new numbers, do you know?
There's multiple green infrastructure elements. They're listed in the report. And like I said earlier, there's some catch basins that I'm highlighting now that actually have curb cutouts so that it directs the runoff into that water quality measure device.
Is there a name for that?
Infiltrer.
What's it called?
Infiltrer. And we provide, will provide, and this is evolving too, because all of these manufacturers require to have their devices certified by NJDEP- require to have their devices certified by NJDEP, I think that's what you referred to earlier, where the bay filter may have been certified at one time, then it no longer was. We can provide, or have provided certifications from DEP that demonstrate that DEP accepts what the manufacturer, or the supplier of that device asserts it will treat. That is, the volume or the quantity of water, the rate, and the drainage area. And I'll say, this is not unlike site lights. I spec a site light that's, you know, by Hubbell, site lighting manufacturer, and then when they go to construction, there's an or equal that's reviewed. So there's often, you know, especially in this day and age when there's supply chain issues, elements of a water quality device, or an element of a product that's on the site that might be substituted. So we provide on the plans what the criteria is, so that if there's an or equal that can be considered, or something that changes in a certification, it can be addressed.
So, like in layman's terms, what's the process with the DEP in terms of the new, you know, technologies? Does DEP review that based on kind of the dialogue you're having with you?
The certification of the devices is not through us, it's through whoever the provider is, Coltech, ADS, these are manufacturers that are competing against each other to provide water quality measures for these green infrastructure best management practices, and they go through a process with DEP to get it certified. And then I, as a design engineer, can go to the town, the state website, or contact somebody at DEP to confirm that something's been certified, or the manufacturers can provide us with those certification letters.
So this one is certified now?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, actually, the fact that this is a wetland, constructed wetland, wetland pond, while I described the water quality element of the permanent pool, there's no credit granted by DEP for that water quality measure. The total drainage area to that is certainly in excess of two-point-five acres, but part of the new regulations is that any basin also has to be green infrastructure.
You're using, obviously, the new stormwater regs that were proposed after the March 2nd, 2021?
Correct.
Okay. And go back to the groundwater recharge that you were talking about, so you redid the spreadsheet based on the New Jersey groundwater recharge spreadsheet?
The, with-
Go ahead.
Yeah, the geotechnical consultant, Whitestone Engineering, did onsite, site-specific soil tests that determined that the sites are not suitable for recharge, and it's a D soil. So from a stormwater standpoint, I talked pretty length about one of the three elements, the quantity, we're all concerned about impacts, and the discharge, the total discharge, the peak flows. The other element is quality, which we've talked about just now, about the manufactured treatment devices and water quality measures. And the third element is recharge, if your site soils are suitable. If you have D soils, that's not suitable for recharge.
I know one of the comments the Environmental Commission made originally was, the Whitestone Associates Appendix One is vague and provides no real data?
I think that there was supplemental soil testing done by Whitestone in another report, and that's in the current report. I can't speak specifically what they did or didn't do, or rely on that report.
And it said, like, it was originally, it was group C, but now we're saying it's group D?
Correct, correct.
The spillway, would you, could you go into what you guys plan? I know you said you're raising it, but could you give us a little bit more detail?
Yeah, there, over the last, you know, since the initial construction, the basin really hasn't been maintained properly. It's back here, hidden, you know, probably out of sight, not apparent that it needs maintenance. One of the elements that would be done would be the, and it looked like there actually was, over the years, maybe some changes or something done at the spillway area. Part of our improvements to provide additional storage volume is to reconstruct that spillway and stabilize it. And by raising it up higher, we provide for greater ability to impound stormwater onsite. So the water traveling from our site, even through our site into that basin, would have to raise to a higher level before we make it over that spillway, because right now the spillway is lower than what the proposed condition would be.
And so just for, like, the edification of the public here, like, what does a spillway really do? I mean, is it catching a lot of the sheet flow that comes off during a rip, during a storm?
Spillway is a controlled measure for higher storms, like in IDA, so that stormwater that is beyond what the design criteria is has a place to go. Right now, the spillway's there now, but it's lower. We made site visits after IDA saw that it was washed out, looked like water from this basin drained through the spillway.
So, for instance, what are you designing the spillway, in effect, to capture? Can't capture something like-
No, the outlet structure, there's an existing fifteen-inch pipe that discharges from the basin today, which has no outlet structure on it, nothing like a concrete box with orifices and weirs in it. Part of our improvements that we would institute, and that is part of the analysis of how the routing through the basin is done, would be a new outlet structure. That's where the flow primarily would go, the spillway is for those higher-level storms. So the discharge would still primarily go through the outlet structure and the fifteen-inch pipe.
You know, I'm sorry too, I had one more question about the sanitary sewers. That was, so that's gonna be maintained by HTMUA?
The onsite right now is maintained by HTMUA. They keep this easily clear now.
Right.
And then, we just have a six-inch lateral into it, which I think the owner would be responsible for.
Okay.
They're just the lateral, similar to like a lateral from a sewer that were in a street up to your house.
Right.
Trees, and the tree mitigation. As I said earlier, we initially submitted the application with a threshold of wooded area disturbance under sixty percent. We're now at sixty-seven-point-eight percent. That's with the additional disturbance around the basin. Part of the changes that evolved, besides making the basin bigger and going through the different iterations, and I'll say that our initial drainage report, where the hundred-year storm discharge threshold was sixty-two CFS, we were very close to that, we were fifty-eight. So these improvements that have been done over the last month or two, since our last hearing, in response to comments we've gotten, and the enlargement of the basin reduced that peak flow, but it did require additional disturbance. But what also was implemented as part of those planned changes is that the ninety-three trees that were proposed to be planted as part of the initial application submittal has increased to a hundred-and-ninety-five trees onsite, it's doubled. The Environmental Commission asked us to supplement, enhance our vegetation along our southerly boundary, and with our landscape architect, we proposed additional landscaping in that area. And then, with the basin going from, basically what was initially intended to be a grass basin with a low-flow channel, will now be a more, I think, aesthetically pleasing basin where it's a wet pond with a marsh area and substantial landscaping around it, including even the areas being replanted that would be disturbed in order to effectuate the construction of the basin. We're at a tree mitigation threshold of four-hundred-and-fifty-two trees, as was described earlier. That's applying the economic hardship waiver with the hundred-and-ninety-five trees planted onsite. That leaves two-hundred-and-fifty-seven trees that would be part of that contribution. And certainly, to the extent that the board's planner or engineer feel that we could plant more trees onsite, we can work with them and our landscape architect to find locations for more trees onsite. But we're not, if the trees don't go onsite, they would be, still be provided for in the form of a check to the township, a contribution. I referenced earlier the January 31st, 2022 review memorandum from Mr. Winiger. We also are in receipt of a February 8th, 2022 report from your engineer. This is my understanding to, in response to the materials we've submitted throughout the process. It was an initial engineering report dated November 15th, 2021, and we responded to that on December 30th, 2021. And now we have the new February 8th report, and there are a number of items that are indicated as satisfied, and to the extent there are items that are not satisfied, we would agree as a condition of any approval this board may grant to address each and every one of those outstanding items to your engineer's satisfaction. There's also a October 1st, 2021 review from Mr. Maske, your planner. We responded to that on November 1st, 2021, and to the extent that we haven't, and we haven't gotten a subsequent review, but to the extent we haven't addressed any of the comments in the initial report to Mr. Maske's satisfaction, with the exception of the variance or waivers that we're requesting here, we would do so to Mr. Maske's satisfaction. There also was an October 5th, 2021 review memorandum from the Township's Environmental Commission, and we responded to that on November 1st, 2021 as well, and I believe we've addressed those comments and other outside agencies. We have been in touch with New Jersey American Water, they provided us with information regarding the existing water mains. Prior to construction, water service application would be, would have to be secured from New Jersey American Water, as well as the other utility companies, including the HTMUA. And to the extent that we exceed eight-thousand gallons a day, we would trigger a Treatment Works approval, but I believe that the total flow from the warehouse will not exceed eight-thousand gallons a day, and would just be approved locally by the HTMUA as well as SRVSA, but should the flow meet the threshold to warrant a NJDEP approval for Treatment Works approval, we would secure that as well.
Mr. DeSessa, real quick, because I know Mr. Ford said that he would, that they would satisfy anything that he listed as not satisfied, but I noted there's a number of items here that you are requesting for testimony to be provided. Any of those that still insist that we should hear some testimony?
Yeah, there's some that are related, not related to stormwater, but other things we can, we can ask for that testimony.
Yeah, you want me to go through them?
Yeah, I think there's, if you want to start from, I think number four was a question about-
Hours of operation employees that, I believe the applicant, Mr. Reddington, described that at the last hearing? That's beyond-
Beyond, okay.
Just for the purposes of the record, the applicant, when asked that question, indicated that he had no answer to that question, because this building was being built on spec. So for the purposes of the record, Mr. Ford's inability to answer doesn't address the issue, which is, we still don't have the answer to that question.
So, because I know we'll come back to it, because I think we had this issue not too long ago, that we may decide to put some restrictions on those hours of operation, regardless that there's no tenant right now, and if that doesn't work for a future tenant, then we'd have to return to this board.
I think comment number eight under general comments was regarding the trash collection.
Yes, yeah, we're providing a trash enclosure onsite, and it would be picked up by private waste hauler, both the recyclables and regular trash. We wouldn't rely on the county services for recycling.
And based on the location of that, there's no issues with the truck access or-
Yes, yeah. Then we can provide a dumpster truck turning template on the plan to confirm that.
And I think only under stormwater management, we just have, we asked for something to describe the maintenance, comment number 11, operation maintenance manual.
Right, the, it's my understanding that there'll be a joint agreement between the owners of lots 108 and 109 to effectuate what really should have started in the late eighties, that is, the joint maintenance responsibility of the basin. There is an O and M manual, an operation and maintenance manual that we provided as part of our submittals, and as with other applications now, it's, the applicant's attorney would work with the township council to actually record a document that would be discoverable in a title search to confirm that everybody has knowledge of the maintenance responsibilities. And then, there's also a current township ordinance that requires for ma, you know, for private, even for private basins, that periodic inspection reports get submitted to the township engineering department.
Mr. Ford, are you aware, are you aware whether or not that maintenance agreement has ever been reviewed by the township?
For this, for this project? I don't know that there ever was one done back in the eighties, that's what I, this, part of this application would correct that. Perhaps Mr. Grodnik knows it.
Mr. Grodnik, if you're willing to concede as a condition of approval that any such maintenance agreement needs township review and approval?
Certainly, and we don't, we have not discovered one from the 1988 approvals.
Whether you discover one or not, it's-
We need a new one anyway, yeah.
Drew, just a quick question, some of the items where it indicated that there was an indication that they were gonna be adding something like the thirty-six-inch pipe, but it's not on the, it's not on the drainage plans?
Yes, the applicant had indicated that they would, they would change that in their response letter, however, it did show up on the, on the plan.
We'll make it happen on the plans, right.
It'll be revised to show that.
Correct.
You need a break? Okay, we're gonna take a short recess, we'll reconvene 9:30 sharp. Okay, we've reconvened. Just real quick, I just want to remind everybody that we have time limits on test, new testimony. There's no new testimony after 10:00 PM, and then, or starts after 10:00 PM, yes. And then we will, and we continue until 10:30. That would be our cutoff for this evening. Okay? Okay. Anything more? Okay?
I have no further direct questions for Mr. Ford.
Okay, so just before I turn off to the other councillor, is Maske, De Sessa? Anything else?
I just had a couple of questions I wanted to ask Mr. Ford. As far as the enlargement of the basin, what is the potential or possibility of further enlargement to the south? What are the pros and cons of enlarging the basin down even further for more volume?
It's, it's, could be done. It's all about, like, elevation. And now, actually, one of the advantages of going to the wet pond is that now you don't really have to have a sloped bottom. You know, we have the permanent pool, kind of, you can see where it kind of necks down in that 100-foot swath even. This area here, the, don't be mistaken that the basin volume is just where the wet pond is. This area here is a part of the green infrastructure. It's a marshy area, but it still provides for a volume, albeit shallower area. But we could look at, we could look at-
Right, it's storage for the larger storms.
Right. And it's a water quality measure.
The emergency spillway, you have it at the elevation of the 100-year storm-
Correct.
-border surface. Do you know, could you quantify how, how much you enlarged this basin over the existing conditions as far as volumes of-
It was looking at one of our earlier reports where we weren't making the volume changes to the basin. In the appendix of the report, the volume of the basin up to the elevation 52, because I'm going to compare apples to apples, was at a storage volume of 133,000 cubic yards, whereas the current volume up to elevation 52 is at 272,520 cubic feet. So they're both cubic feet. I'm going to say cubic yards is 132, 133,000. I rounded up, 132 point, 132,939 cubic feet up to elevation 52 in one of the earlier reports before we made modifications to the basin. And then, now that we've made modifications to the basin, that volume below the elevation 52 is at 272,520 cubic feet, or roughly two times.
Did you have the volume of the existing basin?
Right, because our initial announcement-
What was that?
That's-
You have a number?
That's the number I just gave you, the 132,939. That's out, out of one of the earlier reports.
But that's not really the functional number, right? That was the, because the basin's not really functioning as it should. Is that correct?
Well, yep, that's true, because I'm saying the volume up to elevation 52, but right now, the spillway is actually at about, you know, not in well-state of repair, but it's at about elevation 51.5. So that's not even functional volume below the spillway. But I'm trying to give you apples to apples, the volume up to that elevation 52, which is about where we're accomplishing most of our storage. And one of the major changes that allowed us to provide for greater storage is, and it's a balancing act, we're, we're trying to meet the stormwater mitigation, but perhaps minimize wetland disturbance. Albeit, the basin is identified as a wetland area, its ordinary resource value, in discussions with NJDP, they asked us, even though it's mapped as wetlands, that it really needs to be enhanced to meet the criteria as a wetland basin. So that's why these changes have been made. And one of the positive aspects out of that change was, as we were just saying earlier, the flattening out, if you will, of the bottom of the basin with that permanent pool that allowed the bottom of the basin be excavated and provided substantial amount of volume below that elevation 52.
Right. So it seems like you have more than 50% increase in the volume of that basin, more or less, now?
Right.
That's all my-
Have you submitted these engineering plans yet to Drew for this?
Yes, Seth.
Okay.
The, right. Our, our latest letter is based on the latest plans.
Okay.
Any additional questions?
Was, was there any consideration of adding a green roof to help mitigate the stormwater situation?
I haven't been involved in any discussions that considered that. That's probably more of a question for the owner and the architect, but not for this.
Thank you.
As, some of the additional disturbance because of the additional volume in the, in the basin, is that affecting sort of the, the site or the visibility from some of the surrounding areas to the, to the building? As you take out bigger chunk of trees-
Well, we're, we're also replanting that area.
Right, but until that matures.
Correct.
So is there, is there still a sufficient line of trees and forestation that it still creates significant site blockage?
Well, the function of that 100-foot buffer that's required, if this were not trees today, we would be required to do the buffering. The fact that there's existing trees there is really a benefit, because the substantial part of the buffer is already there. And to the extent we need to add landscaping to enhance that buffer, we've endeavored to do that. And if there's additional plantings that were being suggested to put in, like we've more than doubled the plantings that were proposed on-site since our initial submittal, there's additional plantings, we consider that. And, and part of the grading, the, the site drains from south to north toward the basin, so the south property line is higher. We've, this, this disturbance here is lowering the grade and excavating so that the building itself is at a lower elevation and not at existing grade at that location. So we feel that's an added benefit to help lower the building so that the line of sight from the neighbors is, you know, not where the building could have been three feet higher here had we placed the building at existing grade.
It takes away more ground.
Any additional?
I know when I, I know when I walked the property, whatever it was, last year, there was a stream behind the property, where the basin is, it kind of comes all the way down from Manville, comes up, and then kind of goes off in the ravine, I guess, in that channel. But does that stream kind of veer off where the tension basin is? It was kind of like a mishmash of trees and rocks and water at the time, but-
That, that is just to the north of the basin.
Yeah.
Right. And then there's a pipe that was built in the 70s that picks up that and runs it down along the existing channel and along that sanitary sewer system.
So, I mean, that has nothing to do with-
We're not-
Your- Your-
Touching that.
Not touching that.
Yeah. But yes, our emergency spillway today is in that area, and tomorrow it'll be in that area. That, that was part of the original 1980s design, and the enhancements we're doing are not going to change that location, just enhance and elevate and make the basin more effective by changing that spillway.
Do you think any portion of that stream would spill into the basin or into the spillway?
Yeah, we, like I said, we have been out there a number of times to inspect it. I haven't witnessed the water flowing in either direction. So in our, in our charge with the outlet structures to hold back the water would be such that we discharge through those controlled outlet structures. And the whole reason we have this basin is to hold back the stormwater, to fill the pond, and then discharge it at a controlled rate.
Right. So it's, yeah, it's, I mean, technically not going to add anything to that stream anyway?
Well, the standards are that you, NJAC7, semi-colonate, has a number of criteria required to meet one. One is, and the one we're addressing, which is most of the, if not all the projects you probably see that are from our office, is where you have a change in land cover like this, you provide for stormwater mitigation that reduces the peak flow for the two, 10, and 100-year storm by a specified, specified amount. Okay?
Thank you. Mr. Ford, before we get into sort of the substance of the stormwater stuff, I just want to clarify a point from earlier. The, the location of the loading ducts, you just pointed out to me one more time?
Yes.
Just say for the record, your name again, so I'll-
Oh, I'm sorry. Jordan Ash, Ash Legal, represent Green Hills Community, the objector in this case.
Yes. It's along the north side of the building, north being the top of the page. There's actually trucks shown there. I see, okay.
All right, thank you for that. So let's get into the stormwater management issues that you testified to. Would you agree with me that one of the main performance standards of the slumwater regulations is groundwater recharge? Is that correct?
That's one of the elements I described earlier. That's a criteria. And in this case, because we have a geotech consultant that's classified the soils as D soils, that standard is not applicable.
So you're proposing to not do any recharge at this site? Is that correct?
I'm saying that the standard that measures groundwater recharge is not applicable to sites that have D soil.
Well, the, the regulation applies, correct?
I've, I've answered it twice. I don't know how to answer it a different way.
Okay, I'll ask it differently. Are you, are you not proposing to perform any recharge at this site?
Again, the standard, because we have D soils, the, the analysis that was done to determine D soils is that they lack the permeability to support a recharge element.
So we'll, we'll get to those, those tests that were done. What I'm asking you right now is, and it could, it could be there telling me because of those tests, you don't believe that you have to under the regulation. But am I correct that you are proposing to not do any recharge at this site?
Okay. There's no specific groundwater recharge elements such as, like an underground basin that has an open bottom and sound, stone that promotes infiltration, or, for example, porous pavement on some projects we institute for water quality measures that also has a stone bed on it that allows for infiltration. We're, we don't have any of those types of elements on this project.
And because of that, that's why you don't have to, in your opinion, perform any groundwater recharge in regards to your stormwater management on this site?
No. Because we have a soil test result that classifies the soils as D soils, we don't have to recharge.
Okay. So in your report, I say, I'm quoting from your report now, it says, "Whitestone," and Whitestone is the geotech engineer that you're referring to?
Correct.
Okay. "Suggests that the upper 40 inches of this soil belongs to hydrologic soil group D, which results in a post-development annual recharge deficit of zero cubic feet." Is that a correct reading from your report?
You're reading it, sir.
Okay.
I don't dispute what you're reading.
All right. If I wanted to bring up the drainage report as an exhibit, I have paper copies, but if, what obliged me to put it up on the screen, I don't know what the board would prefer.
You're looking to put Mr. Ford's exhibit, reporter's-
Mr. Ford's report, yeah. I'm looking to refer to that as an exhibit.
Or the Whitestone.
Or the Whitestone?
Well, it's, the Whitestone report is an appendix to the Ford report.
You have copies- Of Van Cleef.
Of the Van Cleef report, yes, I'm sorry.
Copy to the Van Cleef report, counsel?
I do have copies.
Want to hand them out, and we'll mark them.
Okay.
With Mr. O'Grady would like to agree with showing exhibit. O, O-
O1?
O1.
So what I do have is the sections I want to mark and refer to, I have separated as such, and I'll, I'll mark it in such that everybody knows that. First one is the narrative portion of the Van Cleef report, which was submitted to the board in this, Mr. Ford's report in this case.
Show Mr. O'Grady a copy of what you plan on giving the board, counsel.
Okay.
The heating. Can I pass it around, or do you have to pass it around?
We will.
I need one more.
So there's one from that final piece on there. I believe I have 10 copies of all these exhibits. I think I got close.
So what, what report are you excerpting this from? Can you tell us the, the date and the author?
Yeah, I will, just to make sure.
Okay. Is this the same report that was submitted with the application?
Yes, sir.
Okay, this was submitted to the board?
Well, except this is not the whole report.
Correct.
And the date on the front of the drainage report prepared for is April 30, 2021, revised October 11, 2021, revised December 7, 2021, revised January 6, 2022.
January 26, last revision.
Yes, January 26, 2022. And this is, for the purposes of the record, this is page 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. We're marking this as O1 per check.
Mr. Ford, if you could turn to me real quick to page 5, please. Undergroundwater recharge, section 8, do you have it in front of you?
Yes, I do.
Okay. And you'll see the quote I read earlier there where it says, "Thus Whitestone suggests that the upper 40 inches of this soil belongs to hydrologic soil group D, which results in a post-development annual recharge deficit of zero cubic feet." Did I read that correctly, sir?
Yes.
Oh, great. So if you turn back then to page 4, sir, there's a little chart on the very top there that refers to two types of soils, Penn silt loam and Revo silt loam. Do you see that, sir?
Yes, I do.
All right. Are those soils that are on this site?
Yes.
Okay. And it says right next to that, hydrologic soil group C. What does that refer to?
That refers to the source of that information on page 3, which says, "The Soil Conservation Service Soil Survey, Somerset County, was utilized in order to classify the soils within the trap." And as I said it earlier, we knew that. We always start with baseline data from the Somerset County Soil Conservation Survey. They provide a hydrologic soil group. We use that for our quantity analysis. But when it came to recharge, because we have site-specific soil tests that basically say there's a lack of permeability to support recharge, I, as an engineer, haven't proposed recharge.
Thank you for that. And are you familiar with the-
So there's, so just, so there's not a discrepancy. You're referring to one section in the report that talks about our methodology and pointing to the C soil groups. That's not a contradiction to our later reference to a site-specific test by Whitestone with regards to recharge. Okay?
Okay, but am I correct that the, just that the Soil Conservation Service Soil Survey maps this site as having C soils? Is that correct?
I just said that, sir. I, I pointed that out to you, the source of it.
Okay. And then what you're proposing is that, that soil mapping is inaccurate, and your testing done on the site allows you to change that? Is that correct?
I'm not doing that. We're referring to a Whitestone report that was a site-specific test by another consultant.
Okay, but you're relying on that, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Are you familiar with the Stormwater Management Best Management Practices Manual?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Are you familiar with chapter 12, which is the soil testing criteria?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so you're aware that if you are going to disagree with the NRCS mapping, onsite testing is a requirement. That's correct?
And it's my understanding that Whitestone followed the protocols in chapter 12, sir.
Okay.
And if there's a dispute about that, I could tell you right now, I can't answer that because I'm not Whitestone.
That's disappointing.
Excuse me?
That's disappointing. Do you know if Whitestone performed what's called the basin flood test, which is available for fractured bedrock?
No, I do not.
Do you know if Whitestone performed the recharge calculations in accordance with NJ Geological Survey Report GSR 32?
I, I would have to read the report again to exactly what they did, and we can do it right now.
We'll get there. So when Whitestone went out initially, it was, what was that? What was the month and year of that? You were?
No.
Was it about October 2020?
Yeah, I, I don't recall, sir. And I'm not the author of the Whitestone report.
I'm going to introduce exhibit O2, or I've not marked O2 just yet, but it's going to be appendix I to the Van Cleef report. And I'll introduce that in just a sec. Let me just get it out, please.
Can we wait till the board gets the copy, Mr. Ash?
We're waiting.
Counsel, for the record, can you indicate what O2 is?
Sure. I'm proposing to introduce appendix I to the Van Cleef report as revised January 26, 2020. This is only an isolated appendix I. It's 33 pages long. And it contains two reports from the Whitestone engineer.
Well, obviously, you, the appendix I here that you provided to the board is not 33 pages. What we have here, at least the one, the copy I'm looking at, is an appendix I groundwater recharge with an October 7, 2021, letter from Whitestone Associates of three pages. A figure one test location page of two pages, including the cover page. An appendix A of laboratory test results.
There should be a second.
Second November 2020, November 20th, 2020, report from Whitestone Associates of, thankfully it's plastic, I can't really read it, with seven pages, along with a figure one test location plan and an appendix records of subsurface exploration. So that may all, that may all end up in an appendix C as well. That may all end up 33 pages, but I don't necessarily think it is.
Well, it's, it is 33 pages front and back. And you are correct in the way you broke that out. May, may that be marked as O2?
Any objection, Mr. O'Grady?
No.
O2.
Mr. Ford, do you have this to mark as O2 in front of me now, sir?
I believe I do.
Okay. And is that an accurate copy of what is appendix I to your submitted report?
Do it. You want me to look at every 32 pages?
You could give me a general answer.
Sure.
Okay. I appreciate that. If you could turn with me to the beginning of the November 20th, 2020 report, that's a part of appendix I. Okay, and if you could turn with me to page 7 of that report. Can you see where it says infiltration test results, sir?
Yes.
All right. It says, I'm going to quote from it, says, "Infiltration testing could not be completed within the profile pits due to shallow weathered rock slash bedrock, as well as significant cobble-sized rock fragments within the residual materials." Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
So do you agree with me that what this is telling us is, as of November 20th, 2020, infiltration testing was not performed on this site?
I can't speak to what Whitestone did and why they did it for what they did.
Sir, you're relying on Whitestone to not do recharge on this site, is that correct?
Their conclusions.
So wouldn't their methods be important?
They're an expert.
That you're relying on?
Correct.
Okay. Do you agree with me that it says on this page right here that infiltration testing was not completed as of November, November 20th, 2020?
Are you repeating what you just said?
You have a question?
No, I'm asking you if you just repeated the same thing you asked me a minute ago in a different way, because you just read through this, and it says that infiltration wasn't. I can read it to you.
Go ahead.
Infiltration testing could not be completed within this profile pits due to shallow weathered- Infiltration testing could not be completed within this profile pits due to shallow-weathered rock slash bedrock, as well as significant cobbles-sized rock fragments within the residual materials. The results of, and you didn't finish the paragraph.
Sure.
The results of the field explorations, including the depths to refusal, are summarized in Table 1 below.
Okay, but backing up for just a second, you would agree with me that on this page, what is telling us that infiltration testing was not completed as of November 20th, 2020?
Just read it. You read it.
Is yes or no?
Okay, yes.
Thank you.
I read it twice and listened to you, and I agree that's what it says.
Okay, yet, at least on this report, you proposed the site without conducting, without performing any recharge within your stormwater management, is that correct?
I said that before too, sir. Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and didn't we previously talk about how testing was a requirement if you're going to disagree with the NRCS soil mapping?
Right, and as I stated earlier, that BMP man you referred to earlier in Chapter 12 has this procedure for that, and it's my understanding that Whitestone followed that procedure.
The procedure, if we're going back just a second, and correct me if I'm wrong, the procedure is that testing must occur if you're going to not follow the NRCS mapping, is that correct?
Yes.
But testing did not occur here, is that correct?
We're talking about specific infiltration tests. I don't know if Whitestone did other tests to make their conclusion, sir, I just-
Are there any other tests in this November 20th, 2020 report you could point me to?
Their soil logs?
I think you're now in the second report, I'm still talking about the first report.
I'm trying to answer your first question, sir.
I'm asking you about the first report.
Okay.
Just want to make sure the record is clear, is what we're talking about.
Okay, so you don't want me to answer the question of any other test results were done, because-
I want to, I will get to the second test, but I want to make sure the record is clear that right now we're talking about the first, the second report. Right now I'm asking you about the first report, and if you could point to me to any other tests in the first report.
All right. So you don't want me to talk about the soil permeability class rating tests that-
I promise you we'll get there.
Have permeability results that say K0, which is no permeability.
Sir, it's getting late, I promise you we'll get there. I promise you.
And I'm just going to interject, and I'll let Mr. Bernstein stop me. Let's just get to the point, let's, can, I'm going to ask Mr. Ford, please state the summary that you received from Whitestone that led you to the D classification, so we, I don't want to go by report by report saying that there was a test done, not a test. I want to get to, right to the point, I know-
I'm sorry to interrupt you, sir, but this is important, because he's relying on Whitestone.
Right, and I want, and I want to get to the chase, and I want him to provide, I'm asking Mr. Ford to go and point right to the report or the summary from Whitestone that specifically states this is D. And that's all, and because in the summary it'll state, I am sure, because I'm in, you know, quality regulatory from an F8 perspective, and when we do summaries, we will state our conclusion and we will summarize where that evidence came from. I, you know, because there can be a series, and, you know, if you want to eat up the last 20 minutes tonight, just to get down to that, to where we're going to end up. We're going to end up to where he got his information, where Whitestone said D. And then you can tear through that onion.
I'm not arguing that Whitestone said D. We know that Whitestone said D.
Right, and then-
How Whitestone got to D is very, very important.
Right, and I-
Here's the problem. Problem is, he's not Whitestone. So what you have before the board is O2, which is the analysis and the two reports, which we're focusing in on one and not the other. The issue is that Mr. Ford has indicated to you that he didn't do the testing, he doesn't know what the testing is, he wasn't the tester, and he's not Whitestone. So what we have, but Van Cleef, so we should not say that was Mr. Ford, Van Cleef engineering for the record relied upon Whitestone consultants to come to conclusions in their report. To the extent that he can answer what Van Cleef did relative to their conclusions, you can get that answer out of him. The rest of it, counsel, is hearsay, because he has no idea what Whitestone did or didn't do except for what set forth the report, and he didn't author the report.
And I'd just note for the record that we offered on multiple occasions to meet with the objectors' engineer, with other neighbors, and they were flatly refused, so perhaps we would have been able to go over some of these questions.
For the purpose of the record, whether they did or didn't doesn't minimize or not minimize the situation. Now, I do have a question, and maybe I'm a little far out here. Do you intend to call Whitestone as a witness in this case?
No.
Okay. Be guided accordingly, counsel.
A few things were said that I feel you should respond to in this moment right now. So this is not hearsay, this is a report that's included as an appendix to the report that Mr. Ford signed, that he is relying on-
It's hearsay to the extent it's being relied upon for the truth of the matter, is, sir. You can indicate that this is an expert report, that you disagree with it, and I'm assuming at some point you're going to produce a witness who's going to disagree with the expert report. But to try to prove the truth of the matter based on a report where the individual here is not the author of the report is hearsay.
If Mr. Ford is relying on this report to come to a conclusion that is central to compliance with the stormwater management rules, I believe that as a signer of the engineering report which he submitted, he's relying on this, there is a duty to at least somewhat verify the information in these reports. He signed his report, his report, he's relying on this report.
Then ask him about that.
This is exactly what I'm asking him about.
No, you're asking him, what does the report say, and why does it say that? You know there are two reports in there, you know, one says A, and the other one says B. Because the October 7, 2021 report says exactly the opposite of what the November 20th, 2020 report says. So why-
That's not for the record, that's not true.
Why don't you hone in on why he came, why Van Cleef came to the conclusion they came to relying on the Whitestone report? Now, there's nothing to stop you, counsel, from calling or attempting to call Whitestone as a witness in this case. Mr. Brodick has advised you, he's not going to. You're not a stop from trying to bring them here.
So are you stopping me from going down this line of questioning?
No. I'm indicating to you that, and I think the chairman has also indicated, that get to where you need to get to, the report speaks for itself. If there's something in the report that you want to highlight to the board through this witness, do it.
Respectfully, I'm asking simple yes or no questions, and the answers are being avoided here, so-
No, he's answering them, and you ask it again, and he answers them, so, but the answer's not changing from what I gather.
All right, I would like to continue respectfully, this is line of questioning, I think, is very important, I'd like to pair it out.
I'm going to object, I'm compelled to object, because I don't think it's relevant. He said he relied on the conclusions of Whitestone.
So the methods of Whitestone then are relevant.
Then subpoena Whitestone.
I think we have a stat that Mr. Ford is, does not have, and you're correcting with my language, you know, in-depth knowledge of Whitestone's methodology, other than that they stated, they performed a method, they followed a methodology, but you didn't witness them-
For the record, sir, they said they didn't perform a methodology.
In the first letter.
In the first letter. And I think we're all capable, when you do pass these around, I could see, I can read the context, so if you want to just point to us and say, hey, look, they said no, I mean, Spence admitted, we don't need Mr. Ford to interpret, no, you know, no, we're not performed for this. I'm just trying to use everyone's time efficiently as possible. I mean, I know the direction going down, so, and I've heard his testimony, you know, we've heard his testimony, he's saying he relied on the conclusions, so I, I think this board here would be very interested to see that specifically and go down that line of questioning, exactly what was that conclusion that he saw? And if there is some dispute or of the context of it, then we would be interested in hearing that point, but to go through every one of these and just say it wasn't performed, I can, we can read that. You could pass those around and say, look, guys, go on page five, it wasn't performed, okay, next. I just don't need him to ask.
One thing, and Mr. Ford, in your general opinion, perk, as we're talking about here, obviously, is shale, bedrock, dense soils, does that permeate, or does not permeate?
You know, I do a lot of work in the area, do a lot of septic projects, I mean, the stormwater regs that require infiltration in this area of the state as opposed to other areas of the state where it's sandy soil, it's a constant battle, and what I just would like to say is, we're talking about recharge, which is one of the three elements. We talked earlier about quantity, the peak flow, what would impact, drainage impacts, and quality. Even if I ignored Whitestone, and I could, and put porous pavement in the parking area along Route 206, and provide for recharge, that would not change the quantity analysis. You don't, we wouldn't take any credit for that recharge, and that wouldn't change, per se, the quality analysis either, although, like I said earlier, porous pavement with a stone bed can provide for recharge, but porous pavement also does provide some water quality measure. And I would say also that we have a lot of basins in town, and often, a lot of times, the reason of a mode of failure is silting up or lack of permeability, or what you think was permeability based on five tests, you should have done 10 tests and you didn't prove permeability. I'm talking generally. In this specific case, it's my understanding that in reaction to comments, there was additional analysis done, there is a section here that says that they did the analysis in accordance with Chapter 12, and I'm sorry, I'm jumping into the other report that I'm not supposed to talk about, but you're right, we relied on that report.
All right, so if I can start asking questions again, respectfully. I want to go back to November 20th, 2020 report, and I'll take the advice of the board, and I'll ask you, sir, in that report, where is the conclusion that you relied upon to propose no recharge at this site?
I would have to read the whole thing, sir, to be able to tell you now. Like to do it at another time. We had discussions with Whitestone too, through the-
You rely on those discussions?
We take information from those discussions, what their conclusions are.
Can you tell us today about those discussions that you relied upon?
That the analysis that they did at the time, even before I get a report, this is what our result is, it's not a suitable site for recharge.
Okay, so sitting here right now, you can't point me to the, any conclusion of November 20th?
I'm not going to, I'm not, it's not what I'm saying, and you're looking at a January 26 report that also includes an October 7, 2021 report.
Okay, and-
That's the one I'm talking about. If you want to, if you want to talk about, you know, earlier reports, there's been other analysis done, we react to comments.
Can you, correct me if I'm wrong, when you initially proposed this application, you did not propose any recharge on the site, is that correct?
The basin was a standard basin, it would provide for recharge, we did no analysis, because our understanding, again, is that the site was not suitable for recharge.
Okay, and then, at that point, am I correct that both DEP and the Environmental Commission told you you had to go get more data if you wanted to not do recharge on this site?
That's what I recall, yeah.
Okay, and then, now we get to the second Whitestone report, that's why that occurred, is that correct?
I don't know if that's solely the reason it occurred, I don't, no.
Okay, and can you point me to the conclusion in that report that you rely upon?
It actually says 3.1, this is on page three of the October 7, 2021 report.
I just want to correct for the record, I think it's 3.0?
Oh, I'm sorry, 3.0, yes. Conclusions and recommendations. Whitestone recommends the upper 30 inches of the subject site be classified as D soil.
Can you read that whole paragraph for us?
Yes. The results of the investigation performed by Whitestone indicate that the subject site consists of an upper clay layer underlying by a less transmittive weathered shale bedrock layer. As such, Whitestone recommends the upper 30 inches of the site be classified as D soil.
Three or 40?
Forty. Upper 40 inches.
It's upper 40 inches. I thought that's what I said.
No, you said 40.
So for the record, we agree it's 40?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you-
Please.
So for the sake of determining recharge, the analysis that you would do if you were implementing recharge on a site is you compare the recharge that happens at the site pre-development, and then try to meet that same, or there's a criteria to meet the recharge post-development. So there's a number of replenishing groundwater. So, for example, if an upper soil horizon was a parking lot, the existing recharge capability of that site would be zero. And that, and maybe that's a Z, not D, but if you have an upper horizon that's clay, and under it is some soil that has a lot of permeability, the recharge criteria is still that upper layer, because it would never get to the lower layer if it doesn't get through the upper clay layer.
Can you turn back me to the first page of that October 7, 2021 report? Under section 2.1, it tells us what the field exploration was, you see that?
Yes.
All right, and it says it was performed with hand excavation equipment, you see that?
Yes.
All right, and HA1 through HA18, do you understand that to mean hand auger, the HA?
I don't.
You don't?
I don't know, again, I'm not the author, sir, so I don't know what-
You don't know?
Yeah.
Okay, so test locations HA1 through HA18, if we go to the next page, you can see that big chart of all those holes, you can see where it says seasonal high groundwater, it says NE for not encountered, do you see that, sir?
Yes, I do.
All right, seasonal high groundwater not being encountered at 40 inches below ground level, is that an indication of infiltration to you?
No, groundwater, not necessarily.
Okay. And it looks like the-
Because, for example-
Sir, you answered the question, I'd like to-
Now, let him finish.
I'd like to reserve the right to recall this witness next time, so I still only have 10 minutes left, and a lot of my time is-
I'm sorry, that's all right, that's all right.
Now, we still have to go to public, trust me, he'll be back.
Go ahead, Mr. Ford.
Please, answer the question.
Well, when you asked about groundwater, if you, groundwater is regional, so if groundwater is shallow, you might encounter it at 30 inches, but if you're, depends on what time of year you're- of year you're doing your soil tests, whether you encounter groundwater.
All right, if you could turn to the next page of the report, page three, it tells us the hydro, hydrometer test results, test location HA 1, and HA 1, do you see that, sir?
Yes.
So those were the only samples sent to the lab, correct?
They're the only two samples that are listed on this chart.
Okay, and then if you go to what you were looking at before, the laboratory test results, is that what's telling us this is HSGD soils?
This is a soil suitability class rating test.
Okay.
It's on Form 3C, and a hydrometer test is the, another name for a soil suitability class rating test. Does that answer your question?
Sure, and in this 2021 report, I'm scrolling all the way through, I don't see any logs as to that field investigation. Do you see any there, sir?
There is the test, the field test summary table that you referred to earlier on page three, that identifies numbers, the depth, and the visual soil classification.
All right, just to.
And to answer your question, I would interpret that as a description of that soil horizon or a log.
All right, can you turn to, back to the 2020 report, Appendix A for me?
Yes.
Appendix A is records of subsurface exploration, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, and you see those records that make up that Appendix A, those are the types of logs I'm referring to, we don't see those in the 2021 report, correct?
It's a different reporting, that's correct.
Okay, if we just look at these logs for a second, if you look for bore number one, B1, it says hard, hard augering occurred at two feet below ground level, is that correct? It's on the right hand, it's on the right hand side of the page under remarks. Right, there you go.
Okay.
Yeah, all right, and if you look at the top of that log, where it says date started, date completed, November 12, 2020, it says logged by MH Contractor AD, it says equipment CME 45, do you see that, sir?
Yes.
You know what CME 45 is?
Probably referring to some type of excavation equipment. And to save you time, they probably did these with a backup, and the other ones you're referring to was a hand auger, and I would concede to that unless Whitestone offers some other method of how they gathered the data, just trying to.
Yeah, I like, and then if we could go over then to the, where it says sample information on the left side of the chart there, still on B1.
Okay.
You see where it says blows per six inches?
Yes.
All right, and then if you go to the depth on the left-hand side of the page, it says two feet to 2.9 feet?
Yes.
All right, and then it says 31, and then it says 50 per five inches, do you see that?
Yes.
All right, so that's telling us this machine took 50 blows into the ground to get five inches. So would you agree with me that this is telling us that the heavy machinery that was taken out on that day took 50 blows to dig five inches at two feet below ground level?
The specific questions about Whitestone's means and methods and methodologies, I think it's beyond my knowledge.
Okay, but the.
Just how they did it.
The hand auger.
And speculating how they did it and what machine they did it with, I.
We're not speculating, we have the logs.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna object to this.
Like the C135.
I'm just asking.
The documents speak for themselves, he already testified that he relied on the conclusions.
And I just want to go back to the hand augers that got down 40 inches, that's correct?
Correct.
Okay, so the hand auger got down 40 inches and the machine took 50 blows to get five inches at two feet.
I'm gonna object and advise my client, my witness not to answer the question.
All right, I'll move on. Let's go to water quality.
Just gonna note it's 10:25, that clock's a little bit fast, so, we've got five minutes.
Have your drainage area maps been marked as an exhibit, sir?
We provide drainage area maps in the back of our reports.
It was Appendix K, I believe, has that been marked as an exhibit?
No.
Okay, I'd like to mark those as an exhibit, please.
Lock yourself out.
Oh, sorry.
Those keep in score. Those keep in score. I was waiting for the boards to get their copies. Okay, it's Appendix K to the Van Cleef report that was submitted as part of this application, titled Drainage Area Maps, and it is three sheets long.
Mr. O'Grady, can we get a proffer so whether or not this is the full Appendix K?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so we talked about it a little bit earlier, but to the recently amended stormwater management rules, can you remind us, what is the maximum contributory area to a green infrastructure?
2.5 acres.
All right, and you're proposed to be at, at what number?
Less than 2.5 acres.
Okay, looking at this map, can you tell us which drainage areas you're including?
There are water quality measures by the inlets as I described earlier, and the drainage area to the inlets is shown on this plan.
Okay, but there's, do you see it says DA 1 and it goes all the way up through DA 12?
Yes.
Okay.
DA 13, actually.
Oh, DA 13, did I miss one? Oh, you're right. So to get to your, I believe you're at 2.27 acres, can you tell me which of those drainage areas you're including?
There are water quality measures provided in advance of the inlet where it's being treated, for example, DA 1 is 0.92 acres, that's to that inlet, out the back of the inlet goes to a manhole, goes to a water quality measure, and then back into the manhole that connects to the basin. DA 4 has a water quality measure in advance of it, so on, so. And it's not our intent to not comply with the regulations regarding the drainage area maximums.
I'm not accusing you of intending bad will.
Okay. I'm just, it's compliance, not really bad wills.
Let me ask you a question. The cul-de-sac where it, it looks like DA 12 is a part of, do you see that?
Yes.
Okay, are you adding impervious coverage in that cul-de-sac area?
Yes.
Okay. And under NJAC 7812, would you say that's a motor vehicle service?
Yes.
Okay, are you providing treatment for DA 12?
No, we're not.
Why not?
Because that's in a public right of way, there would have to be a water quality measure in advance of that.
Are you providing quality treatment for DA 11?
DA 11 is on the other side of the cul-de-sac, it's the same as D 12.
So are you providing treatment for it?
No.
Okay, so you are adding impervious surface that qualifies as a motor vehicle service under NJAC 781.2, if you're proposing to not treat that water?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want me to start a new topic here?
No, we just hit 10:30, it's a perfect timing. So as I stated, you know, coming to the end of our meeting time, obviously we need to find a night to continue.
The next available meeting is March 10.
Does that work for everybody?
Your worst head is, is good with, with us.
Yeah, it's good with the applicant, hoping we can finish since we have no more direct testimony.
Well, before you get hopeful, Mr. O'Grady, you've got Mr. Ash, I assume is going to continue his examination of Mr. Ford, and there's still the public, and I believe, Mr. Ash, you are calling witnesses?
Yeah, I have one expert witness, and then I think that my client will testify. It will limit it for, for efficiency's sake.
Without too overstepping my bounds, if there is a desire for the parties to try to come up with some kind of resolution, the time to have that discussion is now. I'll leave it at that.
I will say that the prior offer was made on the condition that if any changes were made, we'd go away.
I'm not indicating whether they're conditioned or not, if there is a desire to have that conversation, the time is now. I think I speak on behalf of my client.
Do we need a time of decision extended, David?
Probably.
We need a motion, Mr. Chairman, to extend this hearing to March 10, 2022 at 7:30 PM or as soon as thereafter the matter may be heard without further notice.
And can we also include the time of decision?
Time of decision is.
Is the end of all, is the end of March.
31st of March, yes.
Okay. With that, do I have a motion?
Some of them.
Second. I do a roll call, right? Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Santorita?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Ms. Smith, Johnson, and Delcor.
Yes.
David Pani.
Yes.
Mr. Julian.
Yes.
Charlie Caracci.
Yes.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
See you in a couple weeks.
So, is anyone else on the table?
Excuse me? Is there, are there going to be any other applicants on the table? Not right now, that would be the only ones on the table.
Hopefully we can get finished on the 10th.
I'd like to talk to you about the business meeting, if you have a chance?
Me too.
I would request that you keep the business meeting on February 24th, what I'd like to do is do a drive run, we have the Chromebooks, they're all in now, and we'd like to get everybody acclimated to it, we'll have either Jim or Fred from IT here, we'll lay them out, make sure everybody can, can connect and get in touch with the Wi-Fi and also be able to access Civic Clerk. So I thought it'd be a good time to just do a drive run. We'll still, we have, until we have a new, brand new application, you obviously already have all the paper, but this way, on a business meeting, we have some housekeeping stuff, minutes, resolutions, we could probably take care of too. But this way, everybody, anybody has trouble with the Chromebook or can't access Civic Clerk for some reason, we could address it at that, at that point.
Okay, because we may have a limited crew here on the 24th.
As many as.
I think they have a very limited quorum, that's maybe the problem. I won't be here.
Well, the, yeah, Mayor and Mr. Delcor should know how to use it anyway, you do them on the PC meetings.
Do I qualify from yours bygone?
Well, we just want to make sure. Because eventually, you know, and I'd like, you know, in March, we'd like you all to start using these Chromebooks and being able to access Civic Clerk at the dais and not have to bring, after that, you won't have any paper, you'll still have the paper in March so you can do both, but we'd rather make this as clean a transition as possible.
Most of you all want to share my paper.
You're not getting any paper. You're getting a Chromebook.
No, I'm not getting a Chromebook. He said that right now, I'm spending his time and his money on a Chromebook.
Yeah. Yeah, those are just five, whoever needs to feel they need the training, shall we say. Can we get five?
I, I will be here if you need me to, yeah, I could be here.
That's two. Three.
Are you going anywhere?
I don't think so, I think I could probably.
Four, one more. Well, Ron, maybe Ron, yeah.
Chickarelli or something.
Yeah, you're right, one of those two, okay.
So you can, you can keep the meeting pending the quorum.
Yeah, and then if not, if the board gives the chairman the ability to cancel the meeting if we can't get the quorum, that'd be fine too.
If the objective is to get as many people familiar with the thing, you don't necessarily need a quorum, as long as you can notice for a meeting, if a quorum shows up, great, if a quorum doesn't show up, you'll teach whoever shows up. That's very wrong.
Okay. We'd like to adopt a few things at night too, but if we can't get a quorum, we can't get a quorum. Right, so if we can get five people, we're good, in terms of beyond the Chromebooks. So we will, we'll survey people between now and then and see how it turns out. Okay?
Motion returned.
If there's nothing else, all right, is there a second?
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.